I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, I'm glad you're here. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council on items appearing on this agenda are advised to indicate their interest by doing so by submitting a speaker card to city staff or proceeding to the podium one by one at the time an item is considered. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council on items not appearing on the agenda may do so during item five. Each speaker will have the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, once per agenda item unless otherwise allowed by the council. Speakers are requested but not required to identify themselves, both on applicable speaker cards and in comments or testimony. Speakers are advised that their names and any information submitted on speaker cards or otherwise provided in writing to the city may be disclosed or become a matter of public record. No speaker should expect privacy of such information. Yoli, will you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Connors, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Moore, Mayor Protem McCary, Mayor Horn.
Here. And the Pledge of Allegiance, well, our Mayor Protem, please lead it.
If you arrive, please, if you're able, and place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, we come to presentations and ceremonial matters, and it's the International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Would our City Clerk please read the...oh, wait, before we do that, before we go onto our presentation, I'd like to call on Councilmember Moore to say something.
Speaking, really, I'm surely for everyone in this room, I think we really should take a few moments and acknowledge the total devastation that's happening in Los Angeles. We all just feel terrible, and I think if we...would you...how would you like to do? You want to stand or sit, or I think a few moments, just to acknowledge?
Well, whatever you...what would you like to do?
I would stand.
Acknowledge the work of the fire department?
Right, well, no, it's really also acknowledging the problem and the...and our feelings toward the people who are undergoing this terrible situation, so that's what it is about.
Then a moment of silence, I think would be. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we come to International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Would you read the proclamation, please, Yoli?
No proclamation, this is just a moment of silence, if anybody would like to.
Just a moment of silence, okay, we'll have another moment of silence.
I think we should stand, don't you think?
No.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone...would anyone like to speak to that at all, or no? Okay. Did you say yes?
I just find it unusual that these two horrible things are being noted by us in juxtaposition, that there are terrible things that happen to us, and there are terrible things that we do to each other. But what's important for us now is, first, to see if we can be prepared for either of those kinds of things, to prepare ourselves for natural disasters and to prepare our community for political difficulties. And the second thing is always to keep in mind our common humanity and our need to have empathy for the victims of either kind of disaster.
Thank you.
I guess I'm going to take it slightly differently. I don't think the Holocaust...I think it was a horrid situation that was preventable. And for us to not acknowledge that things like that occur is to allow them to happen again, and it's not only what occurred there, we have seen antisemitism in universities, we've seen people turning out and making statements, and this is not acceptable. And I think...I think we acknowledge people have needs, and we want to look and take care of those needs, but we cannot allow that kind of behavior. So I feel very strongly on the Holocaust remembrance is not just to acknowledge there was a day, but to remember this was a horrid, preventable kind of activity, and it was hate. So we can't allow that kind of behavior to continue, so I feel very strongly on that, and I don't think they're similar at all. One was a natural disaster, and the other is a preventable situation, so I feel very strongly on it. We need to acknowledge what happened and make certain that we don't let that occur again. Thank you.
I understand that quite a few families had moved to their parents' home in Laguna Woods Village because of the fire, and all of a sudden, you're going to have some busy neighbors coming, the kids running around and stuff. I want us as neighbors to be considerate and kind to them, and let them know that we support them in any way we can, and offer help. Thank you.
Does our Mayor Protem... No. I just want to say that that's why efforts like community bridge builders and spreading kindness, getting to know your neighbors, not just going to their events, but actually spending time with them, dancing with them, eating with them, learning about different cultures can really help so much, and we're so lucky here that we have so many cultures available in our little villages. You can travel the world without the airfare and hotels, it's just wonderful to take advantage of that, and you learn so much about people. So that's the only way that I can think of to prevent these things in the future is to just impress on people to be more kind. So I would like to call up the Orange County Fire Authority Chief Mike Summers to please catch us up on the fires and all the efforts they're making to help LA and right here in Orange County.
My pleasure. Thank you, our Mayor, Council, and City Staff.
Better? Better. Little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the Council on current fire, weather, and our response to these incidents throughout the Los Angeles County and here in Orange County. As you're all aware, the Los Angeles wildfire siege has caused immense property damage and even the loss of lives. We've had unprecedented winds and fire behavior with these fires, and the outcome is tragic. Our hearts and prayers are with the families impacted by the devastation of these fires, especially those who have lost loved ones. I wanted to update you on how we, as the Orange County Fire Authority, have responded to assist these fires and what we're doing fully to ensure our communities are safe. A summary of our OCFA resources in Los Angeles. The OCFA, on January 7th, deployed fifteen engines, fifteen fire engines, one dozer, one helicopter, and a number of overhead personnel to the Palisades and Eep fires in Los Angeles. Currently, the Palisades fire is at twenty-three thousand, seven hundred thirteen acres and is nineteen percent contained. The Eep fire is at fourteen thousand, one hundred seventeen acres and forty-five percent contained. We still have crews actively engaged in keeping evacuations in place, keeping the community safe, and continuing to mop up around the fire to ensure that they don't have hot spots, especially as the winds are continuing to persist through this heat for the red flag warning that we have. Additionally, the OCFA deployed our Quick Reaction Force, which is the Innovative Aerial Assault Task Force created and launched by Chief Fennessy of the OCFA. We've been dropping hundreds of thousands of gallons of water day and night since these fires began. We also sent additional resources, including damage inspection specialists to survey what's been damaged for cost recovery. We've sent the efficiency of our fire mechanics, and we also deployed our Urban Search and Rescue Mission Ready Package to assist in recovering missions for those that may have been lost. So summary, continued upstapping during the red flag warnings here in Orange County. The OCFA continues to work diligently to ensure our resources and personnel are ready to respond to the community's needs before the red flag warning could issue on January 7th. The majority of our workforce has worked since the beginning of the extreme wind events to assist the LA fire siege, or in Orange County, to ensure robust staffing. The OCFA will continue to staff and follow resources during our red flag warning, which will persist through tonight and potentially through tomorrow morning. Currently at standby, we have our local anchor, which is twenty-four anchor numbers, we have one dozer, three water dropping helicopters, one water tender. We've activated our Department of Operations Center and Command Staff. We've activated our All Hazards Incident Management Team to respond to any complex incidents here in Orange County. And we have a total of twenty-six surge fire engines ready to respond to any incident in Orange County. That's in addition to how all our stations fully staffed throughout this entire wind event that we had for nearly a week and a half. A summary of a few vegetation fires we've had here in Orange County. Fortunately, we've had a number of small vegetation fires that were quickly mitigated by personnel responding before they were found out on arrival. On Friday, January 10th, OCFA responded to a vegetation fire in Ida Valley Canyon, and our resources were immediately augmented with the upstaffed resources. Fortunately, the fire was extinguished before our arrival. In addition to confirming its containment, our fire investigators remain on site working with law enforcement to determine the cause. On Friday, January 10th, just after 5:00 p.m., the OCFA responded to fire behind homes along the Arroyo Trigo Golf Course in the city of Mission Viejo. Within minutes, our firefighters, including all upstaffed resources, arrived and stopped forward progress in less than a half hour, holding the fire to less than two acres. No damage to any recorded residents were incredibly grateful for our response, size, force, and speed. On Saturday, January 11th, just after 11:00 p.m., the OCFA responded to a fire behind homes in Laguna Hills. The response was quickly augmented with upstaffed resources to ensure we could mitigate the fire. Crews quickly accessed the fire on the trail off Alicia and found a small fire burning in the vegetation behind homes. Our firefighters worked with law enforcement to determine the cause. And then lastly, Monday, January 13th, just after 4:30 p.m., the OCFA responded to a vegetation fire near Village Park in the forest. Due to robust response with our upstaffed personnel, crews were able to extinguish the fire in under fifteen minutes and hold it to a quarter. We've also worked with law enforcement, with our fire investigators, to find and determine the cause of this fire. Brief summary regarding our community wildfire mitigation efforts here in Laguna Woods throughout Orange County. Each year, our Wildland Resource Planner, Wildland Operations Division collaborates with county and state parks to maintain fuel breaks, protect wildland urban interface communities from wildfires. Examples of this project include road grading maintenance, vegetation management, fuel break construction, grading and installation of helipods. Recently, we had an Aliso Viejo helipod put in place in Aliso Woods Canyon. And in powerful inspections in conjunction with community risk reduction to reduce and mitigate fire risks. We also do prescribed burning with the Cleveland National Forest. The OCFA also continues to work with our water repairs, who are responsible for the water supply in Orange County. We are actively meeting with our water departments to ensure all systems meet the demands that we may experience during an emergency. Additionally, OCFA's community risk reduction forms approximately one thousand ninety-one defensible space and fuel on inspections of all homes along public space in areas active area have very high fire hazard severity status. We investigate all fire hazard complaints we receive, and our community risk reduction fuel services office will investigate the fire hazard complaint. We also work with communities, cities, and HOAs on applying for how they can apply for Cal Fire Wildfire Prevention Grant's program. This grant program is focused on hazardous fuel reduction within our communities. Benefits of the grant include increasing defensible space and roadside protection between half available structures and removal of hazardous fuels. Additionally, wildfire mitigation and safety information can be found at OCFA.org by clicking on the safety tile. Two last quick things, I'll try to agree. We do have a new technology here in Orange County, it's wildfire detection technology, so we have the Alert California Wildfire Cameras. These cameras are strategically placed throughout our urban wildland interface areas and remote areas in the county, and they assist us with early detection of wildland fires. In fact, a number of the fires that I discussed at the end here in Orange County were detected by artificial anomalies, and we launched a dispatch just based on that anomaly itself. So we're working diligently within our Command Center to, when we see these anomalies, will verify the anomaly and then will launch a response to keep these fires small. And then lastly, I'd like to talk about summary of fire and EMS services here in Laguna Woods. Fire Station 22, located here, 240 is our local city of Valencia, serves the Laguna Woods. We have a total of thirteen individuals stationed at Fire Station 22, twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days in the time of the year. We have two paramedic engines, Engine 22 and 222, and one Tiller Drum Air and Blacker Truck 22, that responds to all calls for services here in Laguna Woods. We also have several nearby fire stations surrounding Laguna Woods that will augment and staff in Laguna Woods to respond to the emergencies here. In 2024, Fire Station 22 ran approximately five thousand nine hundred seventy calls, which is an average of four hundred ninety-seven point five calls per month. Fire Station 22 remains one of the busiest fire stations in Orange County. The Orange County Fire Authority, the city staff of Laguna Woods collaborate to build an additional fire station in Laguna Woods that will provide improved response times, increase coverage, enhance fire safety, provide better resource allocation, and support the growing population. The OCFA's Property Management Division continues to work with the city on plans to construct Fire Station 12 on a portion of City Center Park located at El Toro and Moulton. Additionally, the OCFA is actively looking at additional properties in Laguna Woods to separate and place Fire Station 12 and Paramedic Engine 12, while the Paramedic Station is being planned and constructed. This concludes my report. If you have any questions, the council, and I'll end up.
Thank you so much for a very thorough report. I did have a question you mentioned about the temporary placement of another temporary fire station while the new one is built. Any ideas on where that placement might be, or what goes into determining where the placement of that temporary location would be?
So we are working with our...we did a standards and coverage report, and we have located base of the private areas, especially with Fire Station 12, where we can get to the west side of Laguna Woods and reduce our response time. So we're looking anywhere at El Toro and Moulton, working west on El Toro, potentially even within Laguna Woods itself, but we haven't engaged in those conversations as of date. I've just been recently introduced to the board of directors from the Lillie Rain Foundation, so we can get a conversation with potential properties within Laguna Woods Gates.
Thank you.
Councilmember Connors.
Two things. Perhaps the Home Depot parking lot would be an interesting location, because they have a lot of room that they use for tree lots and other things at certain times of the year, but is otherwise vacant.
So our property manager has been working, she's in this conversation with City Manager Chris McGinn regarding who owns the property, who she can contact. We do have the ability to put a temporary fire station like we have in Mission Viejo off Marterie while Fire Station 24 is being built, so that's potentially an option.
The other thing had to do with a go-kit or a go-bag, because I did pack a go-bag during this past week before going to bed, and what I took were things that I thought I would need to survive in a shelter for three to five days. But what I didn't take was all the things in my house that I wished I had carried in case my house were destroyed. And I assume with your Ready, Set, Go information, you have a list of things that people should think about when they assemble their go-bags?
Of course, yes. So the website, OCFA.org, and that safety tile, there's a number of educational brochures that discuss the Ready, Set, Go program, and then there is a brochure that talks about the set portion of the Ready, Set, Go. It's pack your vehicle, emergency items. They give the list of those emergency items that you should carry in that bag in the event of emergency, and then stay aware of the latest news, Alert OC or NIXL, subscribe to those notifications through the Orange County Emergency Management Office so that they're alert of when those fires are, so they can get out. Yes, there's a list of go items within OCFA dot org site.
More and more documents are digitized, and you don't necessarily have to carry a birth certificate or a wedding certificate, or even a passport, because you can replace a passport, but other things, kids' drawings or report cards or whatever. Okay, I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I want to ask you a couple of questions. Some of those, I did see the AI thing, that was fantastic, that humans didn't, hadn't even seen it, and you caught it on that camera. I wanted to ask about the faults, because I think some of that with this wind, and particularly, are we...are you feeling comfortable that the vegetation under some of these lines, particularly right over here, I'm thinking, Chris, that area right to the west of our, of our, you know, gate nine, we did at one time trim, you know, can't come in and do that, and those lines are particularly vulnerable, I would think. They get to swinging, then you get a fall, and you get the sparks, and then you have your fire.
Are you right under that?
That's what I...that's my...yes, correct.
So you see with Southern California medicine, they did a number of the power safety shutdowns, and that's part of the process of committing if one of these power lines does fail and falls in vegetation that doesn't spark a fire. But I have also worked with our community risk reduction inspectors to go out and get that plot land or parcel of land, to identify if the vegetation is overgrown or not, and look at that easement along SCB and make recommendations to SCB as well as the local authorities.
Thank you, okay, done that, okay. Then I noticed you said the National Forest. The reason I'm bringing this up, I heard someone from a water district talking about, it was over in Yorba Linda, and they were talking about the state is not trimming back, and they said they wish they could build a wall, because that vegetation continues to, you know, become fruitful, and then there you are with a situation. But I noticed you said the federal, and we have state, is that an issue, getting a permission to trim, you know, when the vegetation, those areas? Thank you.
So my understanding in talking with our Assistant Chief of Community Risk Reduction, Roy Smith, Chief Smith, is that we do have jurisdictional responsibility, like with private landowners and HOAs and working with city equipment enforcement, but when it comes about county parks, state, or federal lands, we lose the ability to have that enforcement. But we do oftentimes go and engage in conversations regarding concerns regarding vegetation. But yes, we do have engaged with the National Forest to strike burning specifically up off the San Diego Peaks where they are operating the lives where the vegetation towers are as part of fuel breaks.
I really appreciate the fact that you have been so progressive, and the AI out there helping, I really, boy, it makes us feel good, doesn't it? Thank you.
I was wondering if you had, I have a few things to say, but an update on the injured firemen from that rollover? If you had an update on them?
Or San Diego group, yeah, so a total of eight were injured. We still have one that is continuing, well, there's a number of them that are continuing rehab, rehabilitation. Being rehab. But we still have one that is continually aggressively.
And if any of you missed Chief Fennessy on 60 Minutes, it's worth going and looking online. He's so impressive, he ran into a burning building to get milk and beer to pour on a gas main, because fortunately here, we don't have much gas, but people that do have gas, it explodes, so you should just go and watch his interview, he was on CNN also. And remember your pets, remember emergency supplies for your pets also, not just you. And fortunately, the updates that I get, I post on my personal Facebook page, and anybody in Laguna Woods can be friends, and I put all the updates on there, so thank you so much for providing the information today. We appreciate everything you do. Did you have something? I just had one final comment, and just the appreciation I have for all the agencies that come together, it's not just one agency that responds, and it's not just one agency that's responding, but the fact that all these various agencies work together, so that when people have concerns and their concerns aren't addressed immediately, it's not because of just one agency, but there's a whole pot full of agencies working together. So thank you for bringing that up. Not just agencies, countries that have sent men and crews and equipment, it's just, thank God, we're really, really grateful. So thank you very much. Okay, we'll come to public comments. This is the time and place for members of the public to address the City Council on items not appearing on this agenda. Pursuant to state law, the City Council is unable to take action on such items, but may ask clarifying questions of the speaker, engage in brief discussion, or refer items to city staff, or schedule items for consideration at future meetings. So I do have a few requests, so public comment is now open, and the first one I have is Mike Raw.
I thought it was Rao.
Rao, please correct me on how you say your name.
That's good enough.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Rao, Laguna Woods resident. I request a correction to meeting notes.
And I make a general recommendation for how the Laguna Woods City Council ought to respond to non-agendized public comments. I have observed and participated in other council meetings in Southern California cities, watching myself and others give non-agendized public comment to oppose the Orange County watching myself and others give non-agendized public comment to oppose the Orange County Power Authority. Each member of the public was politely listened to, even if they were from another city, sometimes thanked, and the next speaker called no other city council reacted aggressively like here in Laguna Woods in June and July of 2024 towards its own residents. In the following August 2024 meeting, then Mayor Hatch gave a public apology to Vicki Johnson. Here is the key excerpt, and I quote, "I would like to follow my private apology and publicly extend an apology to Vicki Johnson personally for stepping outside the decorum or boundaries that surround the sanctity, the security and importance of this portion of a Brown Act meeting which is set aside for public comments," end quote. Unfortunately, this apology was entirely omitted from the minutes. I request that the August 21st meeting be corrected to include this excerpt of Hatch's apology. That would affirm your commitment to abide by the Brown Act and your respect for public comments. There are many guidelines for City Council members in the Brown Act. These include the imperative of maintaining decorum and neutrality. Criticism must be allowed. It is never appropriate to belligerently challenge or belittle the speaker. Yes, you have a right and the option to respond briefly in a constrained way, as you just said, but must be very cautious about any discussion. So let's get off to a good start for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, the next speaker is Vicki Johnson.
I'm Vicki Johnson, Laguna Woods resident. Laguna Woods tableed discussion about joining the Orange County Power Authority in August, and it was a good decision because in my opinion, OCPA seems to be sinking like the Titanic. It's good Laguna Woods did not join this sinking ship. I'll mention my understandings of what's been going on with OCPA. In September, Huntington Beach City Council gave a summary of their withdrawal from OCPA, which took place in July. The Huntington Beach presentation called OCPA deceptive and said the JPA was among the worst ever seen in terms of disadvantaging Huntington Beach. OCPA initially charged Huntington Beach $7 million for withdrawing, but Huntington Beach negotiated well and paid almost nothing. In November, OCPA, at their own board meeting and at Irvine, said they faced a $120 million shortfall and they proposed taking immediate actions, including raising rates or significantly degrading the environmental quality of their offerings. OCPA's troubles were a big surprise to Irvine because apparently OCPA wasn't keeping the city of Irvine or Irvine's OCPA board members informed and the Irvine City Council and the relationship was deteriorating fast. So on December 12th, and I know some of you are aware of this, the Irvine City Council held a long city council meeting and they voted unanimously their intent to withdraw from OCPA. That's 65% of OCPA's load or customer base. And the presentation by the city manager had a lot of concerns, including OCPA was overstating the cost savings relative to SCE. OCPA didn't explain their financial challenges to Irvine, which would have potentially resulted in $200 more per resident on their electric rates. Animus appears to this. Anyway, there were many long slides presented by the city attorney. It was a lot more bad news for OCPA. So again, I applaud you for tabling discussion of joining OCPA. And we were scolded by this council when we tried to warn you and there were indications that maybe I was even smeared by a council member, but the outcome was positive and our resolve to be watchdogs is greater than ever. And lastly, I'd sure like to thank the firefighters for all the work they've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Kate Van Kamp.
Hi, everybody. I'm being quick, like all of you. Did a lot of thinking about emergency preparedness. And I'll be reporting back to the Democratic Club tonight. I'll tell them what you told us. Like you, Cynthia, my go bag was sort of a camping bag and it didn't fit going to a hotel. I had cool tools where I could make a fire, but I didn't want to make a fire. My brother lives in Oregon. We compared, we had very different bug-out bags. An idea, three years ago, I gave everybody in my family a bug-out bag. Now that trouble is getting them to review things every New Year's Day they're supposed to. I reviewed the VMS, which I could find, emergency preparedness document yesterday, and I have a lot of comments. In fact, there was virtually nothing about evacuations except for somebody being in charge and nobody was named. I did a lot of this over my career for Northern Trust Bank, all over the country, and this document, at least, in my opinion, was not detailed enough. I tried to find ours for the city. I don't know if we have one, but I couldn't find one. I'd be happy to review it. I'd be happy to participate. In my building, there's a very senior officer of the Red Cross. If she was in town, maybe she could participate. I'll just, I have a long list and I'll organize it and send any concerns to Chris. But some of the things were like, could we put our buses to work? Would we lift the gates and how would we decide like one lane in? All kinds of little things. Could every cul-de-sac have somebody other than firefighters and police to make sure disabled or sick people can get out? I mean, we might have a lot and I would hate to see all the resources just knocking on doors. I had a neighbor whose kitchen burned because she could not hear the alarm in her kitchen where it was burning up and she was just on her computer. Luckily, her neighbors broke into her house and even air horns. I was saying, we have a lot for coyotes. Maybe we need air horns if there's some kind of emergency. We probably can't afford sirens. And then in the city, we have the residential buildings outside the village, you know, are they prepared? Is the senior center prepared? Are the horses prepared? So anyway, that's, that's the concern. I know the three-story buildings have some sort of practice, but I've only been here five years, but we've never practiced anything.
Thank you, Ms. Van Kamp. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Kamp, I want to thank you for your comments and for your suggestions and your thoughts on this. I want to check and see if you had been in touch with the Disaster Preparedness Task Force in the village because they have a pretty robust informational and equipment program. But the issue with organization and finding cul-de-sac captains and building captains, I think, has been a chronic problem in a village where people, even if they're willing to take on that responsibility, a few years later, they may have aged out or illness out or injured out or something. And it's, it's hard to, to maintain that level of organization, but I think your concerns are valid and I appreciate your comments.
The, the county, we work with El Toro Water and El Toro Water, I'm talking now the greater, not right inside the village, works with We Rock and they do have major plans and they, they are on top of it. So that's another, there, things are being done.
I just wanted also to say that the fire department has vibrating fire alarms so that for people that are hard of hearing, it looks like a, an alarm clock and it goes under your pillow. So if you don't hear, it'll vibrate and wake you up. So thank you for your comment. Morgan Goldstein, please, is next.
All right. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Morgan. I'm a district representative with Supervisor Katrina Foley. She represents the fifth district, which includes Laguna Woods. So I'm here today to provide you with some updates from the county.
Pardon me, could you speak in a little bit closer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is that better? Okay. So I'm here with Supervisor Katrina Foley. During yesterday's board meeting, the supervisor was unanimously elected by her colleagues to serve as vice chair for the upcoming year. So that's the newest update from this year. But as we enter this new year, I wanted to highlight our accomplishments from 2024. So in 2024, we did a few things that helped solve problems for everyday residents. This includes implementing a common sense e-bike safety ordinance, introducing a nitrous oxide ban, supporting Prop 36 and anti-encampment enforcement, fighting for reasonable regulation of sober living homes, advocating for federal and state grants to support our rail corridor, and opposing all tax increases for residents. This year alone, our office assisted in bringing home more than $1.25 billion of each, for each of our district's top five priorities. Some of that money includes $500 million for clean air technology and the creation of green jobs, $479 million for public safety investments, $305 million to place 500,000 cubic yards of sand onto eroding South County beaches, and $57 million in additional funding for affordable housing developments. This year, we really want to hear from the residents of our cities about what your priorities are so we can continue to serve you best. We have an online form in our newsletter, or you can also contact our office directly. Our newsletter is at bos5.oCGov.com and that's where you can receive updates on our work, view our full year in review, and you can also find information on fire safety and current public safety initiatives. And then if you can't find the website, I'm also going to stick around so anyone in attendance can find me after and I can sign you up as well. If you have any questions or concerns related to county services or how to access them, you could always contact our office. I'll leave some business cards. And then finally, I do have some answers guides. They are published by the Council on Aging and they're always free. So if anyone wants, anyone in attendance wants some of those, I can provide them for you. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pat McComb, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Concerning the fires, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all your, your report, but I was concerned about the fire hydrants in our area. I know they failed up in Palisades and areas LA. Do they do regular checks on those fire hydrants to make sure water's coming out?
Yes.
Do. Okay. Thank you.
The fire people and the water people here.
Is there anyone else that has a public comment? Seeing none, public com, okay.
A public comment about the fire department? To praise the fire.
Yes, you can come up and praise the fire.
I'd like to give a special thanks. I understand how really dangerous that job is for you guys and we really appreciate that. For example, here's something maybe not many people knows. You know the nozzle on a fire hose? That kicks back about 100 pounds worth, can be more than that.
PSI?
So the guy handling that hose, fire nozzle, sometimes has to crawl on hands and knees to stay under the smoke that's in a burning building to avoid inhalation of smoke and pushing that thing, having to breathe faster and probably gaining more inhalation problems, that fire hose actually kills more than you'd believe across the United States every year, either directly or indirectly. If that thing gets loose, bang, a smash on the head, 100 pounds worth will kill you. But also, if you're exhausted and overwhelmed by the smoke, that'll kill you too. It's very dangerous, right?
I think it is.
Do you, do you ever handle, have you ever handled one of those, those nozzles? So you know where I speak. Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your comments. Public comments are now closed. We will go to the City Treasurers Report.
All right. Thank you very much. Our City Treasurer is enjoying the last day of a vacation today, so I will be giving the report on her behalf. Cash and investments as of the end of December, the city had a little over, a little under, I should say, $13.2 million in the bank. Of that, about 47% was our operating fund, the general fund, at just under 6.2 million. The remainder of that was a combination of reserve funds at just, or just under 3.8 million, and then special revenue funds that are restricted or committed for various purposes at just under 3.3 million. That 13.2 million or thereabouts was primarily held in a combination of pooled money investment accounts and certificates of deposit. The city had, at the end of the month, the majority of the money in LEAF, which is the state pooled money investment account, with a smaller amount in the Orange County investment pool. And then roughly 45% of all cash and investments were held in certificates of deposit. Notable activity in December, we did make a transfer from our county investment pool to the state investment pool. We moved 4.5 million in the month of December. There was a combination of thinking that went into this, partly chasing higher interest rates. LEAF is currently paying slightly more than the Orange County investment pool. The county has also had some changes with respect to their delegation of investment authorities out of an abundance of caution. We also took that into account when contemplating how much money to move around. Certificates of deposit, we did have two CDs that matured. The principal balance on those was $245,000 each for a total of $490,000. That money was deposited in the city's checking account for cash flow purposes. Our trust funds, the retiree medical trust fund had a balance of just under $143,000. We did have a net loss of $4,542 in the month of December. The pension pre-funding trust had just under $280,000, again, a net loss of $5,194,000. We did make, as the city councils are aware, a contribution to the pension pre-funding trust of $104,490,000. That was approved at the council's most recent meeting. Recommendation, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's an opportunity for public comments on this item. And then our recommendation is that the City Council receive and file the City Treasurers Report for the month of December 2024.
Are there any public comments on this Treasurers Report? Seeing none. Okay, council, anyone have anything they'd like to say?
No.
Okay, so.
We'll take a motion and a second.
File. I move.
A second. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, we come to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the City Council or city staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration of action. Members of the public may address the City Council on items appearing on the consent calendar regardless of whether an item is removed for separate discussion and consideration of action. With some, thank you. A second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay, there's no public hearings, so we come to City Council Business, Administrative Policies. I'll return, turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you very much. The item before you today, item 9.1, has to do with two existing administrative policies that have been approved by the City Council in previous years. We're recommending changes to both Administrative Policy 1.1, which is titled Council Member Administrative Support, and Administrative Policy 2.9, which is our Budgeting, Reporting, and Reserves Policy. On the Council Member Administrative Support Policy, this is a policy that was originally On the council member administrative support policy, this is a policy that was originally adopted by the city council in 1999. There were very minor changes made to it in 2010, but it has remained largely as it was in 1999. Policy talks about the type of administrative support available to council members by staff. Our primary effort here was to take the existing policy and update it to reflect the way that the city does business and existing practices. There are a couple of departures from that. Some of the more notable proposed amendments include establishing deadlines for members of the city council to add items to the agenda. I would note that while we have included in there a recommended deadline of essentially the week before for letting staff know that you'd like to add something to the agenda, there is still a provision in there that allows for items to be added on an urgency basis after that deadline. There's a second deadline related to agendas for written materials to be included in the agenda packet. That's closer to the agenda publication itself. Generally speaking, for a regular city council meeting, we post the agenda on the preceding Friday. We would request written materials from the council the preceding Wednesday, and then just notification that you are adding something to the agenda the Friday before the Friday the agenda gets posted. The other, one of the other changes, more significant changes in the policy, has to do with formalizing the list of annual proclamations and moments of silence that it has been the city council's practice to agendize on an annual basis. So these would be proclamations and moments of silence that staff would automatically agendize. It wouldn't require a council member to specifically agendize them. We've included that list in there. Council is obviously free to modify that list over time, but we compiled it looking back 12 months at what had been agendized for the city council. Anything in addition to that that a council member might want to agendize, you know, in a given month based on a request or an emergent need, you would be able to go through the normal agendizing process for that. And then finally, we would, we've included language in there that directs staff to standardize the form of mayoral commendations that are issued for birthdays, marriage anniversaries, and similar types of anniversaries and club anniversaries. The format of those commendations has kind of evolved and been very fluid over time. We're looking to standardize that to something that will allow us to get them out quicker, improve the turnaround time, make sure we don't miss deadlines when they're requested. The, like I said, administrative policy 1.1, a more comprehensive update. If you look at the existing policy, which we included in your agenda packet, and the proposed policy, they're very different. One is much longer than the other, but again, it's mostly an attempt for us to simply capture what our existing practice has been, formalize that. On the budgeting policy, we mentioned at your last meeting that we wanted to start setting some goals for our pension pre-funding trust fund, and indicated we would be coming back to you with that. That's what we're talking about today. We looked at that pension pre-funding trust fund. You've made two contributions to it. You have, we just did the treasurer's report, I think it's 200 some odd thousand dollars in the pension pre-funding trust. In taking a look at our needs, we are recommending that you set an initial goal of $670,000, which is a rounded figure derived from the amount of lump sum payments made over the last five years to reduce your unfunded accrued liability for the city's pension fund or pension plans. Those are the lump sum payments that the city council has made every year to fully fund its pension program. So for those who are unaware, the city doesn't have the kind of monstrous pension debt liability, unfunded pension debt that other cities might have. We're recommending that you set the initial goal at $670,000, and that to reach that goal at the end of each fiscal year, once the audited financials are complete, if there is general fund revenue in excess of expenditures, that 50% of that amount be contributed to the pension pre-funding trust until we reach the $670,000 level, at which point staff would come back to you with a kind of secondary goal for the fund. The idea with the pension pre-funding trust from staff's perspective is to, at first, get enough principal in the fund that the interest generated allows us to pay our current year actuarial liability. And then at some point in the future, the principal, a combination of the principal and the interest is sufficient that when you go to make lump sum payments to pay off the entirety of your unfunded pension liability, you're able to draw from the pension pre-funding trust and then have it be replenished at some point in the future. The 670, we are viewing as an initial goal, and then once you hit that goal, we would hope to have a broader idea of how the lump sum payments might flow through that fund. Obviously, one of the benefits of the pension pre-funding trust is that it's available to you to pull out for CalPERS-related expenditures, but it's also generating interest at a much higher level than the investments the city has, generally speaking, in CDs and pooled money investments. When we went into the budget policy to start to redline some of those changes, we did take a look at the balance of the policy to see if there was anything else that we would recommend that you modify at this point. The only thing that we identified was some language clarifying the intended use of your existing self-insurance contingency reserve fund. That fund, I think we've always understood it to be money that is set aside for any sort of legal judgment or settlement that isn't covered by the city's insurance policies. There is language in the policy right now that I think unintentionally limits the stated purpose of it. It doesn't limit the functional purpose of it because the city council is able to use it for any lawful purpose. You created the fund, you can modify the fund. But in the interest of clarity, the language that's in the policy right now is specific to settlements derived from, or as a result of workers' compensation or liability claims that are not covered by insurance. That's obviously only one piece of the type of award or judgment that might not be covered by insurance policies. So we've added some language that broadens the intended use of that policy to both claim settlements and judgments that might not be covered by insurance. So again, I don't view it as a substantive change, at least as far as we, we're always under the assumption the intent of the contingency was. It's more just aligning the language with what I think we believed the intent was. You do not typically spend from that reserve fund. I can't think of the last time that you spent from it, which is a good thing, obviously. Things are being covered by insurance, or to the extent that there are even claim settlements or judgments. But again, just in the interest of clarity, we would recommend making that change. We do have a redlined version of the budget policy in your agenda packet as well. So there's an opportunity for public comments today, and then staff's recommendation is in two parts. You're welcome to take it as one consideration of action, or two, to adopt a resolution titled a resolution of the city council of the city of Laguna Woods, California, adopting amendments to administrative policy 1.1 pertaining to administrative support provided to members of the city council, and two, adopt a resolution titled a resolution of the city council of the city of Laguna Woods, California, adopting amendments to administrative policy 2.9 pertaining to budgeting reserves and reporting. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. I'd suggest maybe taking public comments, and then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, first I'll go to public comments. If anybody would like to speak, please come to the microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Makin. I've looked a bit into this LaSara pre-funded pension trust, and there are about, as last I looked, about 90 organizations that participate, but only nine cities. So I was surprised to see Laguna Woods is one of only nine cities. And their investments, you say it may generate extra income. They look pretty speculative to me. Recently, it was 40% invested in global securities. I think maybe more recently, 20% invested in global securities. But my main concern is, the CalPERS, oh, year after year after year, they overestimate the income that they think they'll receive to pay pensions, and there's usually about a 25% shortfall. That's why the cities are having these huge accumulated liabilities. So if CalPERS is overestimating, because the boards just say, sure, whatever, the people on the boards voting for CalPERS pension policies all have pensions, so they vote higher pensions for themselves, they can't make a 7%, 7.5% rate of return. Cities accumulate liabilities. The CEPT that you're enrolled in is administered by CalPERS. Why would you hedge, which is what the pre-funded pension trust is for, why would you hedge these potential liabilities with the same organization that's repeatedly coming up with more liabilities? In other words, there are options to the CalPERS PPT, which some other cities have said, don't use that. Also, any higher rate of return should also be looked at. What is the risk? 20%, 40% invested global securities? Maybe you'll get a higher rate of return. But can you really trust CalPERS, given their long track record, long, long, long track record of not meeting the rate of return they estimate? Hence these accumulating liabilities. So I'd be very cautious, plus the prepaid pension trust fund is in a lockbox. You can't use that for anything else. You can make, take that $600,000 if you have it, but don't put it in such a lockbox, and don't invest it in a risky, risky fund. That's, so I could say more about this next time, but I look at concern, and I'm surprised only nine cities are in that CalPERS PPT fund. Thank you.
I think Chris should respond.
I, I mean, I can certainly briefly respond. I acknowledge Ms. Johnson's concerns. I think when we, we took a while to evaluate our options, we did meet with other pension pre-funding providers. I would say that, generally speaking, their fees were higher and their rates of return were lower. SEPT has been around since 2019, so there is some historical data to base it on, but if the city council is concerned about the stability of SEPT, we can certainly reevaluate it. But it was our, our professional judgment that SEPT was the best option for pension pre-funding. You, we're, I think we share the concern, the lockbox comment. There is such a thing as too much money being set aside for any sort of restricted purpose. The $670,000, based on, because that number's based on five years' worth of actual lump sum payments, I, I think the risk is very, very low. Over the first, as we talked about last meeting, I believe, first 10 or 11 months of the trust fund, we had earnings in excess of about 10%, which is more than the city is able to earn in conventional investments available to it. Want to remind the public that the city's not able to invest in the same types of investments that, for instance, homeowners associations or private parties might be able to. But having said that, I mean, I, there are, I think Ms. Johnson's concerns are valid, and I think those are things that we looked at as we evaluated which pension pre-funding trust to go to. We'll continue to monitor the performance of SEPT, and I think as we get to setting future goals for it, if the city council either wanted to consider diversifying pension pre-funding trusts or modifying the investment strategy, that would be very much aligned with the type of dialogue we would expect to have with you anyway.
Councilmember Connors.
I am really happy with our city's prudence in maintaining a record of no unfunded pension liability. And in terms of taking $600,000 and putting it into an account that is dedicated to pension payments, we know that sooner or later, we are going to have to pay pension money. And having this money in that lockbox is not that bad of a thing if you know, I mean, we could put it in our reserves and just kind of earmark it for that, but this way we are able to get a better return, and it's money that will eventually be used for that process, for that purpose, no matter, no matter how we pay it out. So I'm comfortable with putting it in there because I know we're going to have to pay for our pensions sooner or later.
I basically echo those exact comments, and meeting with the, the city manager, I do support the staff recommendations, so I think it's always good to look at other options, but I also think it's really good to, to be able to rely on the information that we get from staff as well.
I did have a comment. I didn't know if she had one. Did Pearl have one?
She doesn't look like she has one.
You know, one thing that I concur, I get your point, and that's a good point to bring it up. The 670, though, because we have that problem with reserves in the village, where once they're designated, that's, you can borrow against them. Can we borrow against in an emergency?
I don't, no, you certainly, the only thing you can pull out is for pension-related purposes. You can do it for current year payments, and you can do it for unfunded future.
Right. I don't think it's excessive, but one thing that I think it would be helpful as we go forward, other states have done this, that, and we can't do it, obviously, but the, once the person is retired, their increase is based not on, we just give the increase, but it's based on the return, and it's a multiple of the return, and it's not the total amount of the return. So is that kind of clear? Do I need to clarify that more? So that if you, you had 5% return that year on your money, you get, you get, once a year, they will tell you what your increase will be. The 5% was the return they got, you're not going to get 5. You're going to have to be less than 5 so you don't keep depleting the situation. This is not currently, in effect, other states do that, and it's a one way to stop this problem. I read, this is an outrageous number, and it sounds so wild, you probably think I made it up, that San Diego had 500 billion. I, that number is so outrageous, my God, can you imagine San Diego? How in the world will they ever catch up? Apparently, they never pay anything, or if they do, they're always under, and it just keeps escalating. And so that is one way. We have to start that process, and maybe League of Cities is, is the place to start that, talking about how to address the unfunded, and part of it, it's not the total answer, but it starts you moving towards a resolution of this problem.
Yeah, well, and I think, just to piggyback on that comment, to the comment made earlier about there being 90 agencies or thereabouts that participate in SEPT, and a smaller number of them being cities, when you look at them, most of those agencies, they're all government agencies, but they're, you know, library districts, other, other types of things. Typically, most cities don't pre-fund pension liabilities because they can't afford to. There are very few cities that do this. Of 400 and some odd cities in California, a very, very small fraction of them do it, and partly, you know, it's because they have really excessive amounts of unfunded pension liability, and when you're staring down the barrel of hundreds of millions or billions of dollars of pension debt, the thought of locking up some money to pay for it in the future is, you know, it's pennies on the dollar. The other thing is that those cities, because of that level of pension debt, often have debt service that limits their ability to really put money aside for anything, right? They're not so much, I hate to use the phrase living paycheck to paycheck, but it's kind of the municipal equivalent where you have money to run your operation, but you don't have liquid reserves that you can put aside for these purposes. So pre-funding, we're in a unique position of being able to afford to do it. I do think, again, to Ms. Johnson's point, there is a ceiling on it, right? There is a point at which there will be enough money in the pension pre-funding trust that it doesn't make sense to continue to build it in perpetuity, but right now, I view 670,000 as a very cautious, safe number, and then, like I said, our goal is to reassess, once we hit that goal, what a future goal might look like, and how we start to use the interest earnings from that pre-funding trust to pay down current year liabilities.
I want to thank you and the rest of our staff for these policies that we've put in place, and we all work with other cities, watch other city council meetings, and talk to other city councils, and this is one of the things that makes our city so unique, that we're pre-funded, that we pay our liabilities, that we allow any council member to put anything on an agenda. I mean, these are things that other cities just don't.
That's true.
So there's a lot that we have to be proud So there's a lot that we have to be proud of here. So I will entertain a motion to move these resolutions.
I still move.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a motion.
Thank you. They've been moved in.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Sorry. You were the second. Okay, got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we come to fiscal year 2023 to 34, capital improvement program.
This is your quarterly update on our 11-year capital improvement program. I want to start by acknowledging that City Hall is very much under construction. I don't know if, the audience hasn't noticed this yet, but we are, this is phase four of the City Hall refurbishment and safety project. There's a lot being done, but what you're seeing right now is, on the outside, you'll see scaffolding. That's relating to replacing the second-floor balcony guardrail. There are HVAC improvements and carpeting improvements being made in this room, lest you thought that the brown paper was a style choice on our part. And then, we are also replacing second-floor windows and exterior doors. Those are all currently like single-pane glass. Really, this is the much-needed update of City Hall that we've been breaking into manageable parts over time. There are also some code compliance improvements being made in the balconies and stairwells. You'll see that some portions of the building have been exposed, and there's some framing going on. Some of that's for the balcony guardrails, some of that's for the stairwells themselves. This project is, is on track so far. This room will hopefully be substantially put back together by your next meeting, at least the ceiling part of it will be. And we are expecting the project to wrap up in March. But again, being, kind of moving around the site, doing a variety of things. Our Americans with Disabilities Act pedestrian accessibility improvement is in phase eight. Construction on this project is substantially complete. There were two driveway crossings that were recently reconstructed, one in front of Temple Judea and one in front of the Laguna Methodist Church. The Methodist Church driveway, which is a shared driveway with Temple Judea, that driveway we expect to reopen on Friday. The concrete has been poured and is currently curing. Once that's taken care of, we'll start the closeout process for this project. The Ridgerow Drive drainage repair project, this is also substantially complete. I wish I had a better picture to show you, but it's all underground, so there's not much to, to be seen. But this was that pipe that had the strange obstruction in it, storm drain pipe. We have successfully installed the new storm drain pipe under the roadway, closed the roadway back up. What you're looking at here is the Catch Basin inlet on the Laguna Woods side. On the far side is Laguna Hills. And then you can kind of see some scoring on the street where the, the road had been opened and the new storm drain pipe had been installed.
That photo?
I'm sorry. This is Ridgerow. Looking across the way is the reservoir on the north side of the street, so you're standing...
Okay, would the dog park be to the right or left?
The dog park is to the right.
The right, okay, got it.
Dog park's to the right, self-storage is to the left. This project substantially complete. The only thing that the contractor's waiting on, they've ordered but not yet received, some of the water quality device inserts that go, again, underground in the inlet itself. So once those arrive, the project will move to closeout. Phase two of the El Toro Road Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project, this is the project that the first phase was the bioswale construction on Molten Parkway. Phase two is the construction of a modular wetland system on El Toro Road. The council awarded this contract back in June. We had an initial delay related to the fabrication of the modular wetland system. The system has been fabricated, the contractor has possession of it. The current delay, as I mentioned last time, has to do with the relocation of an AT&amp;T cable that was news to all involved when the contractor started potholing. AT&amp;T actually, this week, gave us an estimate of just over $51,000 to relocate that cable out of the way. We're working with them on that process. I'm very cautiously optimistic that this project will be able to re-enter physical construction within this first quarter, and that will be finished with it by the end of our fiscal year in June. The Woods End Wilderness Preserve Trail Drainage and Improvement Project, that project, we have plans for it. We are currently waiting for OC Parks to complete their review of those plans. They have told us that they're on schedule to complete their review by the end of this week, so we anticipate receiving whatever they have in the way of comments next week. We'll look to hopefully address those through the, the plan process, and then move this project to go out to bid and try to select a contractor and move into physical construction. The project that we are a partner with the City of Laguna Hills in, the Pasadena Valencia Molten Parkway Confluence Bypass Corridor Project, the City of Laguna Hills is the lead agency on this. This is substantially funded through OCTA grant monies. Laguna Hills is currently preparing a request for proposals to select a design and engineering consultant. They have indicated to us that they are completing their internal review of that RFP, plan to send it our way for our review and comments prior to releasing it. And then hopefully, that gets released next month. And then maybe a month or two later, we have a design and engineering consultant onboard to start that process. The next phase of our pavement management plan, this is on westbound El Toro between Caicorta and the city limits. The council's already awarded the contract for this project. The repaving is tentatively scheduled for the end of February. The contractor's looking at the third and fourth weeks of February. And then after that, they will complete the overhead signage and some of the backplate and visor work that's included in the project. Everything should be complete by March. The reason they're broken up a little bit, the overhead signage, these are the street name signs, there is a bit of a fabrication delay on it, so those will follow the repaving, which can be done more readily. And then I want to talk about an emergent need. We mentioned this to the council earlier in the month, but we have an elevator modernization project that we had designed in 2022. We actually bid it out twice, ended up deferring construction because the existing elevator still has some life left in it, caveated by what I'm going to say next. And we also had a lack of competitive bidders at that time. Unfortunately, on New Year's Day, we had an incident in the building where an individual became trapped in the elevator. Thanks to the Orange County Fire Authority, they were able to remove themselves from the elevator. But that is obviously of concern and an indication that perhaps the elevator doesn't have extended period of useful life left in it. So we are actually putting this project out to bid. We dusted off the plans and specs. We're putting it out to bid on January 16th, so tomorrow. We expect to have bids prior to your February council meeting, and so we are hopeful that we'll be able to make a recommendation to award that contract at that point. Our construction cost estimate is $250,000, but I believe I mentioned this years ago when we were talking about this in the first place, that there are very few contractors who are licensed to work in elevators. And so, construction cost estimates versus the prevailing cost for a small number of contractors who operate in this space, I will not be surprised if the cost of the project ends up being somewhat far north of the $250,000. We believe it should count.
Say that too.
But yes, I, I'm just putting it out there. So we are hopeful that by February, we'll have a path forward on that, and are obviously very glad that the January incident resolved itself quickly. And then, I mentioned this at your last meeting, I just wanted to circle back on it. We have a couple more thoughts to add. So we've identified a, a desire to explore constructing or otherwise procuring a local storage facility for our public works equipment. So this is everything from park furniture to spare streetlight equipment, to the traffic electronic message board trailers, speed trailers. Right now, we're storing all of that at our street maintenance contractor's facility in the City of Laguna Niguel. We have gone through what we have there and assessed our space needs. We think that it's somewhere in the ballpark of 1,500 to 2,500 square feet. A combination of indoor and outdoor space would be acceptable for us. That local storage facility, if we were able to make it happen, would obviously principally allow us to take possession of our equipment, right? Right now, it's in a, a third-party's facility. We have some space constraints at the existing facility. We share that facility with several other cities that are also served by the same street maintenance contractor. There really isn't any significant space for us to increase storage there. And then, we also, you know, we've been using City Hall's parking lot as a staging area for construction projects. That is less than ideal, and particularly after we rehabilitate the parking lot, which is also on your capital improvement program. Continuing to use it as a construction staging location will just tear up the parking lot that we will have rebuilt. So we're continuing to look at options. We are planning to begin making some exploratory inquiries of property owners in the coming weeks with the hope that we can get to a more firm concept of what we're looking at as we get into your budget process. I, you know, we don't own any significant amount of property in the city, so any storage facility would likely be on somebody else's property, but at least within the city's limits, probably under a lease arrangement of some kind. We're open to either using existing space or constructing some sort of space at some point in the future. There isn't a, a clock attached to this necessarily. There isn't a deadline for us to complete this project, but we do want to start looking at it more seriously with the expectation that the construction of the facility would come at a cost, and we'll probably want to start setting aside monies to do so. So I'm just bringing it up again. The, the new information here is that we've kind of honed in on our space needs, and anywhere between 1,500 to 2,500 square feet is probably what we need. So it's not a huge facility, right? We don't have a gigantic need, but we are outgrowing our current arrangement. I know we have a question. I'll, I'll pause and let you ask your question.
My question is, you know, where it comes to my mind really quickly is the storage place behind them, they have, I, I think we looked there because of, maybe it was homeless or something, we're looking, and I happened to look there, and I thought, oh, hey, you know where I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do.
But there's a, a covered garage there behind, and that seems like that area back there might, if you could make arrangements, if they, it worked for them.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at, just at a high level, we're looking at self-storage facilities, we're looking at, much like the Fire Authority with their temporary fire station, we're looking at properties that have large parking lots that might be able to be reconverted into something. And then we're also looking at properties that are owned by the El Toro Water District that may have some excess space around there as well.
They're very picky, you know?
No, exactly. And I mean, we're, we're not looking to be a bother on anybody. This is something we would like to do and like to start working towards, but we want to find the right arrangement that works. So we're going to start engaging in some of those conversations with property owners, see if we can get honed in on a, a little bit better direction moving forward. But just an update on that, we will probably talk about this in greater depth as we get into your next budget process, but keeping it on your radar. And then, actually, that brings us to the end of this item. So there's an opportunity for public comments, and then staff's recommendation is to receive and file this report and provide any input you're looking for. There isn't a need for a formal council vote unless you would like to take one on this item. So I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, well, open public comment if anyone would like to, say, speak to this issue. Seeing none, council?
I want, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I wonder if I can gather some more information. You said there were other cities involved in the current storage facility. How many? Do you know?
I, I want to say three.
Three?
Two or three, yeah.
Do they have equal needs in terms of the storage space? You're talking about 1,500, 2,500 square feet?
I can't speak to their stor, I don't know what their storage needs are. But I think that the situation, as far as I'm aware, is working for them right now.
The reason I have expressed an interest is because in the village, GRF is looking for new revenue, and they have available space, as you know, land. So I think that I might suggest to them that they consult with you guys and see what your needs are.
You mean for leasing?
Excuse me?
Leasing, you're thinking.
Yes, but maybe building a building, if you will.
Oh, building, a building for us to lease.
And for other cities as well, because they're looking for new ideas. So when I heard this, that's why I was inquiring about it. I will talk to the GRF Revenue Committee and let them know about this potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
I did have a question. It had to do, would you go back to the, well, when I was looking at the capital for the building, I'm sure you're doing this, but I was hoping you were...
City Hall?
Well, I was hoping that you were thinking about hardening the building, too. And could you speak to that? Because that's a big deal now.
Sure. So, yeah, every time we do work to City Hall, we're addressing a variety of safety improvements, accessibility improvements, getting us up to current code standards as well.
And I'm thinking fire.
Yeah, so I don't know, in the current project, I don't know that there's anything that directly relates to fire improvements, but I know that we've looked at it in the past.
I'm thinking making our building more resilient.
Yeah, I will, you know, given the, the interest in that, I will have staff take a look at if there are any unmet needs related to, to fire hardening of the building.
Right, because over long term, that, that could come back to repay us if there were ever a serious issue. And I think even for, maybe it wouldn't lower your insurance, but it may mean the difference between your, well, we're self-insured, but it, it, it does have an effect on...
No, I, I think it's a good thing to look at. We can look into that and come back to you with some more information on whether there are needs.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. So you said we didn't need a formal vote?
No formal vote, just an update for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so 9.3 is the SCAG Southern California Association of Governments 2025 General Assembly Delegate and Alternative Delegate. Councilmember Moore usually goes, and I'm the only other SCAG representative, and I probably will not be going. My situation may change, but I think...
Thank you.
If you would like to...
Yeah, I plan to attend.
You want to be the delegate?
Okay, right. Thank you.
Do we need a formal?
Yeah, so if you wanted to make a motion to...
Pardon me, is anyone else going to go? Because then they're the alternate. It would be May 1st, I think.
Yeah, I think it's May 1st and 2nd in Palm Desert. It's the Southern California Association of Governments. It's a regional conference, and then there's a general assembly at part of it.
The problem is that SCAG pays for the delegate, but they don't pay for the alternate. But we could do that if you wanted to have the alternate attend, up to whatever.
If the delegate goes, it's...
Okay.
...probably fine. Unless somebody has burning desire. No, okay, seeing none.
So then the motion would be to appoint Councilmember Moore to serve as the delegate at the Southern California Association of Governments 2025 General Assembly. And you can make the motion. I'll just mention, there is an opportunity for public comment if anybody wants to comment on this.
Does everybody think that Carol should go to this?
Let's not go that far.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Okay. So we come to our city council reports and comments. I know a couple of you have reports and a couple of us don't. So we'll start with Councilmember McCary. I, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem McCary for Coastal Greenbelt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Coastal Greenbelt Authority met here last week, and as always, they express their deep appreciation for the city allowing the Greenbelt Authority to meet here in this council. So the first report came from the Laguna Canyon Foundation. They have a new executive director, Scott Thomas, and he gave an overview... They have a new executive director, Scott Thomas, and he gave an overview of the 2024 highlights for the Laguna Canyon Foundation. In some of the areas they looked at, in terms of trail stewardship, they worked on 12 miles of trail, 4,500 foot of trail tread repair or restored. They installed or repaired 416 drains to divert water off the trails. They worked on 21 different trails, improving their quality for all trail users. In terms of restoration and conservation, wildlife management, they managed over 99 acres of land along the wildland urban interface, pinning fuel for wildfire protection. They worked on restoring over 200 acres of land within 14 different conservation projects. They planted over 3,200 native plants. In terms of the environmental education, they brought 2,281 students to experience the South Coast wilderness on 52 field trips. They implemented two new education programs for fifth grade, fifth and sixth graders. They trained 46 new long-term volunteers. Laguna Canyon Foundation volunteered over 9,700 total hours.
Wow.
The Laguna Canyon Foundation has an upcoming project event, and actually it's coming up pretty soon, they have, for their native plant nursery open house. And it will be Saturday, February 8th, from 12:30 to 4:00 PM. And there's information on the website if anyone is interested in attending that open house. There were several other reports, one from OC Parks. They did comment on the impact of the, back then it was, we had those heavy winds, and there weren't any major power outages to speak of. There was one facility specifically, Irvine Park, experienced a loss of power because of the high winds. Laguna Coast Wilderness Park did make a comment about the decrease in rain that we have up until now. Up until now, it's only been .13 inches of rain since July compared to six inches this time last year. So the comment was that the rain, we certainly have not had as much rain as we anticipated. The attendance at all of the parks, OC Parks, for 2024 was 232,000. The Green Belt Authority, there was also a report, and I will present that at the next meeting, from the National Communities of Coalition about the open space, and I'll present that at the next council meeting. The Green Belt Authority also elected officers, and the current officers will remain, which is the chair, which is Mary Fugus, and myself as vice chair. The next meeting will be, not next month, but in March.
Thank you. Okay, the Orange County Fire Authority, Chief Summers actually gave most of my report. I have, our first meeting will be the 23rd of this month. I have been meeting for orientations with a bunch of different people that have really been helping me to get started, to be able to hit the ground running, but I will have more of a report next month. Orange County Library Advisory Board, Councilmember Moore.
We meet next week.
Okay, mosquito and vector control.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
I did have a Zoom orientation.
Okay.
For the new trustee.
Use your mic.
I might push the rip. Our first meeting will be held tomorrow in Garden Grove, but I did have an orientation Zoom meeting as a new trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency, Councilmember Connors.
We talked a little bit about politics, the fact that with the new federal administration, there is probably going to be less money for high-speed rail, for electric vehicles, for lowering greenhouse gas emissions, but that probably the flow for regular highway construction will be unimpeded. There was a theory that, that the new president will require the support of our Republican congressional representatives to enact his agenda, and therefore he will be nice to California. But I already see now that people are wanting to bargain with FEMA funds for, to get concessions from California. So I'm not sure that we can rely on the federal government for that. Anyway, our toll road staff went up to Sacramento and shared our best practices and gave an introduction to the Capitol area regional toll authority, because they are opening express lanes on Interstate 80 in the area of Yogo County. And there's a potential that our automated back office tolling operations may provide the support for those express lanes as we do for Riverside County on Interstate 10 or 210. We have, we're preparing to upgrade our photographic license plate technology, which will not be substantial, in order to respond to amber alerts, such that if an amber alert comes out or anything else requiring monitoring of license plates, our equipment will automatically hone in on that license plate if it uses the toll roads and will automatically notify law enforcement. We sent out a request for proposals for a toll plaza reuse plan. Our roads went to automatic tolling back in 2015, and our toll plazas are like wider than a football field and a half a mile long, so there's a lot of land there that's not being used. And there's been discussion of staging driverless Uber cars there, so that when somebody calls for a ride, the Uber can just go out and go get them. Also, we have leased an area to the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and they conduct motorcycle training operations on one of our unused toll plazas. Back in 2016, the toll roads converted to all-electric tolling. That meant for much faster traffic, because people didn't have to slow down at the toll plaza, meant for savings on staff, and it allowed us to increase our tolls incrementally by seven cents or 13 cents, instead of waiting four years and then raising it by a quarter or more. And we adopted a 2% per year plan to raise our toll rates, and that makes the bond agencies very happy, and Moody and Fitch keep our bond ratings high because they believe that's a prudent thing to do. So that's good. So then in 2015, our new system went online, and now it's 10 years old. So we had an assessment of that tolling system, the hardware and the software, to see if it's time to go out and replace it, or if it's still got a lot of life in it. And the result was that the fancy new stuff, like connected vehicles and GPS tracking, is not really ready to go online yet. So there's not really any sense in going for a wholesale new system. And most of our stuff is not at the end of its usable life. So we adopted a hybrid plan to replace the parts that need replacement or updating, and to extend our existing use contract for another three years in one-year increments, and revisit it again at that point and see if we are ready to move into the next generation of electronic tolling. And I think that's all I have today. Thank you.
May I make a comment? Your, I received, I don't know if anyone else did.
The phishing scam.
Yes, you want to address that?
Yeah, I do want to address that.
What happened to me when I, I do, I looked at the date, I received a notice that I owed money to the toll roads, and I looked at the date and I thought, wait a minute, I wasn't out that date, so I knew it was a scam. But it does draw you in, because you could have just used the road and think, oh my gosh, something didn't work.
There's a nationwide scam to, where people are getting text messages and emails saying that they owe a toll $6.99 or whatever. And in some cases, the URL to respond even includes the tollroads.org. And that is a scam, and you can just ignore it. But our call center has taken a lot of calls on it, and our webs, the toll roads website has a banner at the top that alerts people to the fact that it's a scam. So you can trust that your toll roads account is being handled the way it always is, and that you don't owe any tolls that are not already being charged on your account, and just delete those when they come to you. Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, we move on to South Orange County Watershed Management, Councilmember Moore.
Not yet, but I would like to make a comment regarding SCAG. Today, the state had mandated, and we've been discussing this at SCAG Transportation, mandated that the, what do I want to say, that the transportation people, the trucking people, had to change their trucks from diesel to electric, but they gave them to a very short time. It was, had to be fully implemented by 2035, which you could say, well, it's 10 years, but you have to, there are no charging stations, you don't buy the trucks before you have them and so forth. And the way it was in our last meeting, this was, got a little interesting, and they were pointing out that what you would have, you have the port, so we'd have trucks loading up, driving to Arizona, then having to unload and put it on a different truck so that it could go across country, because nobody else is doing this. And today, they announced that they are stepping back on that. I don't, I think we should take a look at what I'm saying. There's, what they have done is saying they have not committed to a date that is not stepping back. It is being sensible and saying, we're not quite ready. If you're not ready, don't do it yet. It is something that we're, it needs to be done. Diesel obviously has a lot of particulate, but you can't stop the whole system because we aren't, don't have everything in place. So today, they announced this morning, and I sent that to you, did you see it also? Did anyone else see it? Because that's a, that's a very big decision. And I know that we have a meeting on the 30th, and I'm pretty darn sure we're going to be talking about that. So that was a very big thing. Thank you.
Carol, did they not, did they choose not to go to hydrogen fuel cell for trucks?
What they're saying, Sherry, is that, that's what I was trying to point out. That's a really good question, because I don't think they're saying we're never going to do it. What they're saying, that the date that we established is not feasible. I hope that's the way it's worded, but I didn't, I didn't read the comment, I just saw that they've stepped back from it. But stepping back is not a good term, because it sounds like then you stepped away from it. And I don't think they've stepped away so much as the commitment date was inappropriate, choose some better, you know, see, how can we work this out? And I, at a future date, I would like to give a presentation. I did go up to Downey, it's been a while ago. They are working on something where they use, can take natural gas, and I, this ties in with this actually, that, and using hydrogen, separating hydrogen, use, they can go up to 20%. I'd like to, I'll bring a slide presentation for that to show some other things that can be done. And the reason this is really critical now, too, with the fires, one of the backup usually is when the lines go down, you're trying, all the water in our state, I think it's like 40% of the energy in our state is used to move water. Okay, so when we have fires, we have to keep pumping the water. If the electricity's down, we have backup generators. In general, they can be diesel, but many are natural gas. And I think all of, Yerba Linda's are natural gas. So these are the challenges that we have in the offset. We want to clean the air, but we also have to stay safe and be able to pump water. So these are the trade-offs. So that, if I, hope I was clear on that. I don't quite know if they step back to a different date, but that's where that is.
Thank you.
You bet.
So do you have a report for South County Watershed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Laguna Woods Community Bridge Builders. Everyone should save the date, we're having a grand premiere at the Clubhouse 3, Performing Arts Center, the Performing Arts Center, on Jan, on February 24th at 4 o'clock. It's our video on ageism. It's taken a year to produce this. Eighty-seven people participated in it, writing the stories, writing the scripts, acting, directing, casting. We're not counting the professionals at TV6, because they, they did all the editing and all, but it's, it's been a huge effort. It's for training purposes and raising awareness on this. And all of the aging community, the councils on aging, and the Department of Aging, and the community resources, and the Orange County's strategic plan, and it used to be the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, now it's called something else, but everyone, all these, the California Senior Legislature, they'll all be there, and it's free. So anyone that wants to come, it's going to be at 4 o'clock at the, at Clubhouse 3. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has a meeting or report that they'd like to make? Seeing none? Okay, this meeting is adjourned until February 19th at 2 o'clock. Thank you all for coming.